Ready. Alright, good evening. I will call to order the regular board of education meeting for Chico Unified School District for September eighteenth, two thousand and twenty four. It is just after five P M, five oh four, and we will be going into closed session at this time. We will return to open session at six P M. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, microphone's already on. You can hear me out there. Good evening. Thank you for being here at our September 20, September 18th, 2024 Regular Board of Education meeting for T.K. Unified School District. The board was in closed session starting about 5:00 p.m. The board took no action during closed session, and now we are reconvening in open session. With that, let's please stand for the flag salute. I'm going to pass it on over to Superintendent Staley for student reports.
Well, we have Ms. Heather Saquinte sneaking up to the mic right behind me, so she's eager and ready to introduce our student speakers, so go ahead. She scared me.
Good evening. I am super excited for the student report this evening. We have a really special group with us from Chapman Elementary. We have the Chapman Cats in the back here, and Ms. Kristi Teachea, the principal, is going to come up and introduce their community and some of the things they've been working on this year.
What do we do now? Hi, my name is Amelia, and I'm a student of Chapman Elementary. I'm second grade, Miss Mandarin Miss class, and I just want to say thank you for the black top.
We'll get to that. Say hi.
This is Luna, and she's in TK.
I'm Aurora, and I'm in TK. I want to say thank you for our new black top.
Hi, good evening. I'm Kristi Teachea, and it's my honor to serve as principal at Chapman Elementary. I am joined by three Supercats. And my Supercats are here along with Ms. Gina Rivera, and she's one of our kindergarten teachers, and Katie Smith, our TK teacher. And we're here because at Chapman Elementary, we value and honor the importance of community. In fact, at our school, we celebrate and teach students about our adopted community values of identity, diversity, justice, and action. These values guide our work with our students, our families, and our broader school community. We have also been lucky enough to have volunteers, donations, and the support of organizations outside of our school community. These community connections enhance and enrich the experiences of our students. And tonight, we'd like to publicly thank a few community members for their generous donation to the Chapman campus. I'd like to have Erica Garman, Todd Garman, and Mark Ingleton join us, please, up at the podium. We give them a round of applause. Late last school year, Erica and Todd had noticed that our campus had some pretty bumpy black top behind our TK and Kinder area. Todd had said to me, "Let me take some measurements and see if there's something my company can do to help." And I'm like, "Oh, Todd, sure, you can come on out," thinking, you know, "new black top, right." He came, he checked it out, and really, within a matter of just a few weeks, Todd contacted members of our district office and worked with his company to agree to come mid-July and to put a new layer of black top behind our buildings. Not only was I shocked and surprised, but I was really overwhelmed on that extremely hot day in July where I believe it was a hundred and five. They showed up at about 3:00, worked multiple hours, multiple workers, and made that project happen. To say that we are thankful is an understatement. I really cannot express what that new area means to our students. You can see in this picture, the area at the bottom is what it looked like prior, and the newly paved area, this is actually the day that they came, that is what it looks like now. And so these students, who get to enjoy it every day, wanted to come and share their things as well. As you could see, they were very excited to share their things for our new black top. At this time, I would like to introduce Ms. Gina Rivera and Katie Smith up so that they can also share some things.
Good evening. I just wanna give a quick, extra thank you. I wanted to reiterate everything that Mrs. Teachea said. In a school like Chapman, in a city like Chico, where there are many schools, there are thousands and thousands of students that need to be taken care of and have many needs, sometimes it's hard to get the things you need in a timely manner. We're not the only school that exists, and we know that and understand that. So to have this happen, where somebody came, saw a need, donated time, materials, worked their little bottoms off in the heat for us, I cannot say a big enough thank you. I hope the thing that we have for you here, every time you look at it, you remember and understand the impact that you had for. Some sweet little babies, just like these ones right here, it is really appreciated by us, and every time we open the door and walk out to the black top, we'll think about what you guys did for us. Thank you. Thank you very much.
I'm Katie Smith. I'm the TK teacher at Chapman, and I will add, too, that my old TK students, who are now kindergarten students, who knew what the black top looked like beforehand when they came in on the first day of August, and I see them out on the playground, they come over, "Mrs. Smith, Mrs. Smith, we're not gonna trip!" And they were so excited to see the brand-new pavement. So, thank you so much. We have cards for your workers as well, and we cannot thank you enough, please. What everyone else said, it was wonderful. Thank you.
And I do wanna mention Todd and Mark are here from Knife River Construction, but Rolf Trucking also donated the trucks and equipment. Brian Rolf couldn't be here tonight, but we are, we do have a plaque to thank him as well, so.
And that is community. We really cannot thank them enough for caring about our schools, caring about the Chico community, and giving back just out of the kindness of their heart and seeing the needs of our students. So again, a big thank you.
Good job speaking, kiddos.
TK, that's amazing. Okay, I am gonna invite Kristy right on back up to the podium. We're gonna get to know her well tonight.
Yeah. Thank you again for having me up here. I'd like to continue our theme of community with taking this moment to honor two individuals that have a huge impact on our community every day. As I mentioned, you know, we really believe strongly in our community values at our school, and with that notion, every member of our school community has an impact on kids every day. And so we really try to reinforce that and make sure that we're supporting each other to support our kids. So tonight, I also have the privilege of honoring two of my staff members for their dedication and commitment to our students. I'd like to start by asking Ms. Polly Jones to join me up at the podium. So Polly Jones is our cafeteria lead. She makes lunches, serves students, and ensures that students get the nutrition they need. That's what her basic job duties would include. But what those job duties would not include is her ability to connect with our students, our staff, and the positive impact she has every single day. To say Polly cares a lot about our students is an understatement. She pretty much knows every student's names. It is very, very impressive as they come through. They forget their number, she's like, "No worry," and she's, she knows exactly who they are. With 322 students plus another school that shares our campus, I find that pretty remarkable. She's also one of the most positive people on campus that I've, that I've ever met. There is not a day, no matter how busy, how last-minute request I may throw her way, that she doesn't smile and say, "I got you, we got this," and do it and make things happen. Our students absolutely adore Ms. Polly, and in fact, they also get to delight in her birthday announcements because she ensures that every student's birthday is announced in the cafeteria before they leave. She truly is a positive light in our school campus, and her kindness is infectious. Polly, it's our honor tonight to award you with the Superintendent's Award for Classified Staff for your care, kindness, and beautiful smile that you share with all of us every day. Thank you.
There we go.
Along those lines, the next person I'd like to call to the podium is Ms. Heather Credo. Ms. Credo? Ms. Heather Credo is our school wellness counselor, and she, too, is a ray of positivity and kindness on our campus. Heather is most often seen going to and fro, from classes, delivering SEL lessons, walking with students and talking at recess, and most recently, running and supervising and supporting kids in our Wellness Center. There is very few moments that she isn't working with a student in one way or another. Every single day, she ensures that our students feel safe and cared for on our, in our school community. Most recently, we were able, she was able, really, to establish a Wellness Center, and Heather has spent hours and days setting up this center to ensure that it was ready for that first day of school when students arrived. She decorated it and did amazing things with her cricket that I didn't know you could do, and she also mapped out a schedule to ensure that the new space would be accessible and welcoming to everyone. She somehow managed to even include more time that were open where kids could just do drop-ins. Her dedication to our students and school is apparent with any conversation you have with her. I really could go on and on about the positive support that Ms. Credo makes on a daily basis, but I'd like to close with a message I actually received just today from a parent. The parent called and wanted to report the following. "The positive energy and friendliness that Heather provides to every person she sees while doing crossing guard duty is wonderful. She is an amazing representative of the school and makes sure to smile and wave to everyone she sees. Way to go, Heather." Thank you, Ms. Credo, for your dedication to our school. Thank you so much, and I do gotta give props to my Chapman crew back there. Let's go Cats!
And I'll turn it back over to you, Madam President.
Thank you. Alrighty, so that was student reports and Superintendent's Report and Recognition highlighting Chapman Elementary School. Thank you all for being here and for being amazing. We will move on to Item Six, which is announcements. Does the Board or any members of the Board have announcements regarding upcoming events or awards or accomplishments of the district? Okay, seeing none. Item Seven is Items from the Floor. Items from the floor are for speakers who wish to address the Board regarding a topic, topic that is not currently agendized. I don't have any pre-signups for items from the floor.
We did not receive any pre-signups.
And not anticipating any from the audience at this time, no, just jumping out of their seat yet. Alright, so we can move forward to the consent calendar. Would anybody like to pull an item from consent for further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Do we have a motion?
I move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second.
We have a motion by Member Lando and a second by Member Tennis. Any further discussion, Board? Okay, we will do a roll call vote. It's our first vote of the evening. We'll start with Mr. Tennis.
Tennis aye.
Concan aye.
Dolby aye.
Lando aye.
It's unanimous, it passes. The consent calendar is approved. And moving on to number nine, Discussion Action Calendar. We'll start with Business Services. Nine point one point one is informational. This is the Measure C Bond Update with Ms. Julie Kissel.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having me here tonight. This is gonna be a bit of review, talking about our school district bond history, the bond measures that have previously been passed, luck, you know, were lucky to have had passed in our community, and what we've done with those bond dollars and what our need is moving forward. So, looking back all the way to 1988 was when we passed our first bond in the district, and the second one in 1998, so 10 years later, with Measure A for forty-eight point seven million, and then not again until 2012 with Measure E, which was seventy-eight million, then Measure K in 2016 for one hundred and fifty-two million, which is leading us to the measure that is on the November 5th ballot, which will be Measure C. We now have a letter that goes with our measure for two hundred and thirty-nine million.
I have a question, really quick, I'm sorry.
Yes.
This might be a question for Jaclyn as well. I have not had a chance to pull out my property tax form from last year, because I was wondering if, which of these are still showing up on people's property taxes?
All three, Measure A, Measure E, and Measure K. And the thing to remember about Measure A is that while approved in 1998, we didn't actually sell the first dollars until 2008. And so it doesn't go on your tax roll until we actually sell the bonds to receive the dollars. So there was a 10-year window where the Chico Unified Board was determining what to use those dollars on, and that's why it's still on your tax roll.
Okay, thank you. Great question. So the 1988 bond enabled new construction of elementary schools at Little Chico Creek, Emma Wilson, and up at Forest Ranch. We also purchased the land for what is now Marsh Junior High School and did multiple improvement projects across the district elementary schools and junior highs. In 1998 is when the voters passed Measure A, and Measure A's focus was to build a new high school in town, so a third comprehensive high school for Chico Unified School District. And it took, having gone through the site acquisition process with the State of California and the Department of Ed now on a very small parcel of land over at Chasta, I can tell you that the process for gaining approval for a site is a lengthy process. So three different sites had to be selected by a community community committee within the district that then had to review three different sites. Environmental impact reports had to be prepared for each one of those, which takes quite a while to create and review. Eventually, it was decided to purchase the property on Rayleigh Boulevard and Bruce Road, 50 acres. There were mitigations through the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers, what is now U.S. Fish and Wildlife, that had to occur regarding protected species on that land. It took quite some time to get over those hurdles. By the time those hurdles were jumped over, enrollment in the district had plummeted, and so had enrollment within the whole state of California. When Measure A was passed, both high schools, Chico High School and Pleasant Valley High School, were bursting at the seams. You may remember that there were, there was a whole sea of portable classroom buildings right across the street, and they were bursting at the seams with enrollment. But enrollment had plummeted because of things within our economy, businesses that had left Chico at the time, and we no longer had the need for a new high school. So we had a choice to make. There was a lot of mashing around of different ideas of what to do with the dollars. It was eventually decided by the Board at the time that they would spend those Measure A dollars on the existing high schools. So the dollars were spent on some really great projects. You can see one right across the street, Yale Hall, two-story, 24-classroom, classroom building for Pleasant Valley High School, and the new parking lot. At Chico High School, there's also a large two-story classroom building with science labs, and a number of other projects. One of the larger ones is the Construction Academy over at Fairview High School, improvements to athletic facilities at both high schools, career and technical education projects as well. Moving on to Measure E. Measure E was a seventy-eight million dollar tax extension. The first fifteen million dollars were spent on these Phase One Quick Start projects. So we hadn't had any dollars in the district to make significant safety improvements for many, many years. So we, we had a lot of needs, so we jumped in with, with fencing and signage and lighting for the exterior parking lots and inside our classrooms and learning spaces, improvements to Americans with Disabilities Act from the front door of our schools to the parking lots and the curbs in the front of the school for those that are, you know, need a safe pathway. And then we moved into the, the second phase with our Measure E dollars, and we made major improvements to all three junior high schools. At the time, we had just moved our sixth graders from the elementary schools to the junior highs. So it was a really big transition to take all those sixth graders to the junior high, and we needed improvements to our science And we needed improvements to our science facilities. So, Chico Junior High got a new science building. Modernization was performed on the existing science at Bidwell as well as other upgrades to the campus. And a new science building was constructed at Marsh Junior High School as well as their big multipurpose building. So, that encompassed Measure E projects.
Julie, what is a tax extension? I mean, is that different? How is that different?
So, how that works is the tax rate that was in effect when that bond was passed, when we go to sell new bonds, that rate will not increase. So, it's essentially extending a tax that was already being paid versus incurring a new tax. Does that answer your question? And we get there because the assessed value over time increases, and so in order to pay the same debt, every taxpayer then pays slightly less.
Another great question. Thank you, Jaclyn, for jumping in on that one. So, just some photographs here of the projects at the junior high schools. I guess it's been quite a while ago. They still feel new to me, but it has been some time. But they still look great, and they're serving students well. So, moving on to 2016 was a huge year, and Measure K passed in November of 2016 for $152 million. It enabled us to work our way into Phase 3 of our master plan. And those dollars went into this very facility that we're in right now, total renovation of Marigold Elementary School, the new Loma Vista program building next door. We had planned on renovating their existing building. At the time, it was, it had the worst scorecard for ADA accessibility of any school in our district. And we found that it was better to, for the students, to be less disruptive to their lives, to build the new facility while they stayed in their existing facility, then move them in once it was new and demolish the old. So, that was a big, a big change in our master plan that our architects helped us to envision. We also did Shasta, Nealdow, Pleasant Valley High School Stadium, and the Chico High School Stadium as part of Phase 3. I think we can all agree that the stadium projects have served not only our schools for PE but athletic programs at all of our schools and our community. And then we moved into Phase 4. And Phase 4 started with Emma Wilson expansion of their kindergarten with a new kindergarten playground and three, or four classrooms there, one TK and three kindergartens. The modernization at Pleasant Valley High School for their career and technical education programs in nursing, medical technology, hospitality and culinary and sports medicine and graphic arts. So, several programs throughout the campus. And we had money in the master plan. Pleasant Valley High School was part of Phase 4, but we, we had only planned on modernizing a couple of buildings. So, we took those dollars that we had kind of allocated for Phase 4, and we applied for career and technical education grants for all of those programs. And we were successful, and we were able to leverage our local bond dollars with state career and technical education program dollars in order to do all of that work. So, that was a very successful example of the way we continue to leverage our local dollars. And then, as you know, right now, we're in the middle of McManus Elementary School, a complete renovation. We're about halfway through. Things are going well. We are on schedule to be completed by the next fall semester. Couple pictures of some of those projects that I mentioned. The stadiums, the career and technical education programs. I didn't mention the Ag program over at Chico High School. We were able to renovate the two Ag classrooms significantly and add an outdoor covered area for their welding program and a new greenhouse. So, that brings us to where we're at right now. As I just said, we're in progress at McManus Elementary School. We're in design at Citrus, and we have transitional kindergarten projects at Marigold, Little Chico Creek, and Emma Wilson that are in design. And we're also in design on multiple restroom upgrade projects throughout the district. Citrus Elementary School modernization is also in the works. We haven't quite got into design. We're still meeting with the staff in a process that we call programming. Safety and security projects are always at the top of the list. We are constantly faced with new ideas, new technologies, new mitigations that we can implement on our school sites to create a safer environment for our students and families. So, there's always safety projects going on.
Julie, just clarification really quick on the last slide.
I guess I have it on there twice.
Yeah, Citrus is up there twice, one within design and one within programming. Just wanted to clarify.
It's in programming, not in design.
Okay, thank you.
My mistake. Couple pictures from McManus. These are actually a bit old now. You see a lot more finished concrete around the new buildings. Transitional kindergarten projects that are be coming up at those three schools. And that brings us to Phase 5. So, you know these projects, so I'm gonna jump to the next slide. Rosedale, Chapman, Parkview. Inspire will also be a part of a new bond measure, projects that we'll move forward with. Inspire is a shovel-ready project. It has already been reviewed and approved by both the Division of the State Architect and the California Department of Ed. It is waiting on funding, and if the bond measure passes, then we can move forward with that project.
Do we know, sorry, Julie, do you can...
No problem.
Do we know for the Inspire project, if this bond measure passes in November, how soon they will be able to start and finish construction roughly?
I've been working on that quite a bit lately. Part of the Inspire project includes a two-story modular building, and modular builders are very, very busy right now. So, I've been communicating with the firm that we're working with on the Inspire project and getting in line with them. So, it is likely that an Inspire project could start as early as next summer, but it would not be completed until the fall of 2026. And that is within the timelines required by their state grant, their Proposition 1D state charter facilities grant.
So, I mean, so best case scenario is that we pass the bond, number one, the community passes the bond measure, and that the queue for construction isn't too lagged. But 2026 is pretty reasonable that they would then probably be able to start their fall 2026 year at that campus?
Yes. It's a simple project, but it's also very complicated schedule-wise because they can't exist at Chico High if we take their buildings away, some of their buildings away, and put them over at the new school, right? And they can't exist in their new school if it's not all done. So, summer is a short period of time. So, we have to start our planning process right now. And that's what I've been working on most recently. But yes, it's very, very possible that if the bond passes, they would be moving in and occupying that site fall of 2026.
Oh, okay, thank you.
Okay? This is a slide I really wanted to get to. This is Plan the Work, Work the Plan. So, we have planned the work. We started with our master plan in 2013. And we started with Phase 1. And we have worked our way, all the way through and almost completed Phase 4. We have made a promise to our community. We have included our community in the process of developing this implementation and what the priorities are of our community and our board. And the first dotted line shows you where we're at now, and the big black dotted line shows you where we will be when we have expended all of the measure, current bond measure dollars. So, in order to move forward with Rosedale and Chapman and Parkview and then on to Sierra View and Fairview and Hooker Oak and eventually Chico High and, you know, hopefully their career and technical education programs at that campus, we need new, we need a new bond. We need fresh bond dollars to come in. If the bond does not pass, then we will be faced with trying to put another bond measure on before we can continue down this path. This is really the only opportunity for funding for these types of projects. We do get developer fees from our local commercial and residential developers. We bring in about $2.3, $2.5 million on average per year. And that's nowhere near enough money to fund projects of this size, of this need that we have within our district. So, as part of the master plan, they assess all of the facilities. They come up with an implementation plan. How are the projects prioritized? How much are they gonna cost? When can they happen? And it's about $1 billion worth of facility need in our district. The $239 million doesn't get us to the $1 billion of need, but you can't ask for everything you want, you need, all at once. I mentioned earlier the ability the district has had to leverage our state dollars. This slide has small numbers on it. It has the different state facility programs and grants, but the important one is the bottom circled in red of $121 million. We have been able to leverage our local dollars, almost 40 cents on the dollar. So, for every tax, $1 of tax that is collected in a property taxes, we're getting 40 cents from the state towards our projects. And I think that that's a big promise that we've made to our public, our community, and we plan to continue to do so. And we're gonna talk more about this in a few minutes on the next item. I wanna thank you for your time. I know that was a little bit lengthy, but if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Julie, thank you. Thank you, thank you. Am I live now? Okay. There's, there's also a bond for construction on the state ballot. And my question is, how handicapped will we be if that, if that doesn't pass? Because if it passes at the state level, that makes money that we can go get and pull in and add to our Measure C. If that passes by our community voters, what kind of an impact would not passing the state bond make?
Thank you. That's a great question. As I just stated when I showed the slide with the circle on it, those dollars would not be available. So, we don't get that 40 cents on the dollar of the, you know, assessed tax value if we don't have a state bond. There is no money from the state. We're currently in line for McManus Elementary School. We will not get funded for McManus Elementary School, that leveraged dollars, if the state bond doesn't pass. We get in line with the state on every project that we do that's eligible. So, a lot of times, it takes the dollars a long time to catch up to, to us. Luckily, we have local bonds, so we can pay for these projects to get done, and then state monies come in four, five, six years sometimes later, and they help to fund the momentum moving through the master plan. So, they just get pushed toward the next project that's in line. But without a state bond, we would not have the ability. There was a bond on the ballot four years ago.
Four.
Did not pass. So, they're beyond, the state is beyond bond authority now. They've run out of all their funding with bonds, so they need a new bond as well.
Thank you.
Sure.
Now, I have another question, Madam President. We have, in the next phase, we have three schools that this board has already prioritized as Rosedale, Chapman, and...
Parkview.
Parkview, thank you. In order for us to get all three of those, Rosedale, Chapman, Parkview, do we have to have the state matching dollars in order to be able to fund all three of those schools?
No, we do not. We are not counting on those dollars. We sure hope they'll be coming because they'll, as I said, keep us moving through the implementation plan. But in our master plan, no, we are not counting on funds from the state.
So, just to recap that, the projects that we have prioritized to completely overhaul Chapman, Parkview, and Rosedale is on track as long as our community passes Measure C.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Think we're good.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm next, too.
Do you wanna sit down and then get back up?
No. I mean, I will if you want.
Get some steps in. 9.2, 9.1.2 is discussion action item. It's Resolution Number 1660-24, Proposition 2, kindergarten through grade 12 schools and local community college public education facilities, modernization, repair, and safety bond act of 2024.
Thank you. So, as we just discussed regarding Proposition 2, it's a statewide facilities bond that is on the ballot from November 5th, the whole statewide. This resolution states that our board and our school district is in favor of the bond, and this would be sent to our state legislators.
So, the intent is to demonstrate that the district has a need, has a plan, supports this proposition. When the state legislature receives this, what do they do with that?
It informs their decision-making. So...
State legislature receives it?
It goes to our local representatives, so they see the resolution that our board has passed.
Okay.
Our local representatives.
It's already on the ballot, right?
It is. It is.
So, I mean, yeah, fine.
So, is that kinda like in the hopes for endorsements or positive campaigning?
There's gonna be a huge, long list of every, every school district in California that supported Proposition 2.
Yes. Some of the questions that I was asked by our local news was, how is it funded? You know, how, how is a state bond funded? And what I, from my Googling, what I learned was it's paid with state tax revenue. So, it's part of the overall state budget that gets allocated in all these different pockets, and that's how they repay state bonds.
But the voters decide ultimately.
Correct.
Any further questions? Seeing none. And any public comment on this item? Um, and any public comment on this item? No. Uh, do we have a motion?
I move approval of resolution number 1660 dash two four.
I will second that.
Okay, any further discussion, Board? Seeing none, our last, uh, vote was unanimous, so we can all signify approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay, we have, uh, four yeses and one no, it passes. Uh, moving on to nine point one point three, discussion action, um, architect selection for facilities master plan, FMP Phase Five projects.
Thank you again. So, uh, last Wednesday evening, um, we held interviews between, uh, the four, uh, selected architects as, as the, um, the pool of architects that were selected, uh, last year. And a committee was developed that, um, had the principals from Rosedale, Chapman, and Parkview, and also Sherwood Montessori School that is, uh, located on the Chapman campus, as well as Jaclyn Kruger and Eileen Robinson and, um, myself and Maria Campos, who is our district planner. And, uh, we developed a list of questions to ask these architects in, in the effort of choosing which one of those architects we would bring to you as a recommendation to move forward on the programming process for, uh, Rosedale, Chapman, and Parkview. If you remember back, when we talked about these projects, when we were developing the master plan, we want to be able to investigate the opportunity to create efficiency in the design. So perhaps that library building that we designed for Rosedale is the same library building that goes to Chapman and then goes to Parkview. So we have a savings in the design and the construction as well as ongoing maintenance. So our folks know the building. They know all the parts and pieces. They're the same at all three schools. They don't have to store, uh, materials for repairs that are different at each site because they'll be similar. We don't know for sure that our ideas are going to work, but we are going to start down that road, and we're going to start with one architectural firm so that they can have a broad look at all three campuses. So we interviewed four firms. They were Studio W. They have a local presence here in Chico, and they're also out of Sacramento. HMC Architects from Sacramento, Leonakis, who you've met, uh, helped us with our master plan from Sacramento, and DLR Group. DLR Group, um, is also from Sacramento. All four of these companies have done, uh, performed successful designs for the district. We know that the quality of their work and their horsepower is good, so we really wanted to, um, investigate the best fit. You know, which architect did the principals feel the most comfortable with? That they're gonna be able to work together to glean information from their school communities about their needs and how they want to approach the design. So this committee met and interviewed and wanted me to bring forward that they recommend DLR Group out of Sacramento to move forward on these three projects. So tonight, we're asking you to approve the recommendation of the committee with DLR DLR Group, um, has designed Emma Wilson, Neil Dow, the two-story classroom building at Chico High School for the district. They're currently designing the additional TKs at Emma Wilson.
If I could jump in, yes, I, I was there as part of that, uh, selection committee. And I was very impressed with all, all four firms. It, there was, um, definitely, uh, demonstrated interest in getting a significant amount of community input, and we define, they define community as, uh, parents, uh, general community people, teachers, administrators, the people that are expected to be using these, excuse me, I have to hiccups. They also had, um, taken a, a, a good look at considering where to place these buildings on the property that, you know, that we have for each one. Chapman's going to be a little different because you can't just build it out on the field. You, you have to do like what we're doing at McManus. But the others, not only had they really thought through where to put these buildings, but they also were very focused on the safety issues that we have to think of these days, um, so that not only do we have the single entry, uh, point, but, um, it, there, there's a whole safety issue of, you know, how, how much of the campus could a, an intruder see from the, the front entrance? Um, it, it was very impressive what these firms, you know, and they're developing this for other schools and other districts as, as well, but it feels good to know that people are thinking through, how do we make our schools safer? Can't make them completely safe, but you can do something with how they're designed and how the buildings are laid out to make them safer. So I was, um, I was impressed with everyone, and just to mention, it was a unanimous decision to, for selecting the group that we selected, and, um, now we need this, the community again to pass Measure C, and our community has been so supportive of the bond measures for our schools. And your department, Julie, um, has demonstrated that you take very seriously the expenditure of those funds to get the most bang for the buck, uh, and to leverage state dollars when they become available. And, um, you know, I know everybody who's going to vote on it isn't going to know completely what the plan is, but if you've got access to, um, our district website, the master plan is on the website, and so you can see, you know, what it is we're going to do if our community again passes another bond so that we can move forward and give another generation of kids, cause these schools were built in the 50s. Some of the, some of the grandkids of the original students truly are, are now attending, um, those kids, and, you know, I think there's a contest between which school has the most buckets in their classrooms because things are just not good. Everything leaks or sticks or, um, you know, there, there's, there's a huge need, and so I'm pleased, hoping that the community does again step forward and give our kiddos what they deserve in the way of a place to go to school that's, um, meant to be a good facility for learning.
Do we have any other questions for Julie?
I feel you've answered every question.
Thank you.
All right. Um, we didn't have any public comments signed up for this one. Um, not seeing anybody jump up at the moment, so we'll move to, uh, calling for a motion.
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
All right. We have a motion by Member Orlando to approve the architect selection for facilities master plan Phase Five projects with a second from Member Tennis. Um, any further discussion, Board? Seeing none, uh, we will do a roll call vote. We'll start with, um, uh, Ms. Conken.
Conken, aye.
Dolby, aye.
Landau, aye.
Robinson, aye.
Tennis, aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Passes unanimously.
Thank you, Julie.
All right, our next item is, uh, nine point one point four, discussion action on the 2023 to 2024 unaudited actuals.
Yes, hello. Um, I'm Marie Hartman, and Sharice and I are presenting this tonight. The unaudited actuals report represents the actual revenues and expenditures for the year. It's, um, not a budget. You're used to us bringing a lot of budgets to you, but this is the true financial performance. Um, and these numbers are before the annual audits complete. Our auditors are coming out in a couple of weeks, so, um, sometimes that results in an adjustment, not usually, but sometimes we have adjustments. Okay. You guys are really used to seeing this slide. I bring it to you every budget, um, session, so, um, I just wanted to point out a couple of things. In the columns down below, if you look at 2324, um, on both sides, uh, our enrollment for 2324 and ADA are the same for actual and funded. And that's because our enrollment and ADA is going up slightly, so, um, we're funded on actuals, which is a good thing for us. Um, another thing I wanted to mention is I took a look back at the last budget cycle that we brought to you. That was, uh, estimated actuals, and we had estimated an ADA on that of 11,593. And so we were really close. Um, I wanted to give a shout out to Jen McCall and Jaclyn for good estimating. Um, general fund income statement, so, as a finance person, my eyes always go right down to the bottom. Uh, on our unrestricted side, we have a positive change in fund balance of 6.5 million. Restricted side, a positive change of 875 for a total of 7.3 million. All right, this slide shows our total revenues. Um, if you look our local control funding formula, that ADA accounts for 69% of our total revenue. That's unrestricted and restricted sources. If you took a look at that, um, for just unrestricted, local control funding formula is 93% of our unrestricted revenues. So that's the lion's share of our funding. All right, this shows our total expenditures, both, um, unrestricted and restricted. Uh, as usual, we're a people business. Salaries and benefits is 83% of these total expenditures. And then this one, um, is the same, except it's unrestricted expenditures plus the special ed salaries and benefits. And if you take all of that into account, um, it's, salaries and benefits are 89% of Um, this is just a, a shot of our other financing sources, uses, and contributions. So we had some transfers in from other funds, and there's the RDA pass-through revenues from the redevelopment agency. That comes from Fund 41, and that's used for RRMA, which is also below. Um, and then we also had the developer fees administrative support that come, comes in from Fund 25. And then contributions to restricted programs this year were, um, 29 billion. Special ed is 23 million, and, uh, routine restricted maintenance is 6 million. And that routine restricted maintenance is 3% of general fund expenditures. It's just a calculation we do, and it's, um, increased over the past few years because of the influx of grant funding. So, uh, I'll turn it over to Sharice.
All righty, thank you, Marie. Okay, so one of the other things that we take a look at at this time of year is a comparison of estimated actuals, which is the last budget we brought to you in June. So that's that column on the left, and then unaudited actuals is where we actually ended the year. So like Marie was saying, a lot of times with us in finance, we look at the bottom line. So that ending fund balance, you can see that the difference between ending fund balance when we brought to you in June, it's about $2 million from where we actually ended, um, and it's positive, which is good. Part of that, um, just to kinda go through the comparison, so some of the differences we noticed between when we brought you the last budget and close, um, was local control, control funding formula went up a little bit, um, just a small increase in ADA, uh, which is great, cause now we're funded on current year. Um, and then state revenue went up a little bit. We got the final rate from the state as far as the per ADA, um, rate, and that went up a little. The biggest change had to do with, uh, local revenue, and that's fair market value, which is basically a calculation that we are given a percentage by the county, um, and it says if you were to liquidate all your cash as of right now, here's what the market says it's worth. Um, that was 1.2 million dollars, and so that's a large change, and we have no control over that unfortunately, and we don't have any information when we do budgets as to what that percentage would be. Uh, the expenditure side of things, we had an overestimation of stirs and purrs, and then delayed deliveries, which usually happens around this time of year. It wasn't a huge difference between estimated actuals and UA, but that's, it does happen. And then we had a change, um, in the governmental accounting standards board changed one of their, uh, standards, and said that when it comes to IT contracts, when they are multi-year and they're over a certain amount, we now have to record them all in one year instead of splitting them over the course of multiple years. Uh, and then the transfers and contributions, we, um, it was a little higher due to special ed revenue. Okay, so then this chart goes through a comparison year over year. Um, that final one on the right is where we ended for ending fund balance on the unrestricted side for 2324. And then it has all of the different categories. Um, the largest ones are other commitments. Those were, um, commitments that the board has put in place over the last few years, as well as unassigned. This is a list of, um, cause we also take a look at the restricted side. Uh, it helps us with planning for future costs, and so this is a very large ending, uh, restricted ending fund balance. Uh, it's probably the largest we've had in a few years. Um, and this is due to a lot of state grants that we've received over the last few years, um, that will help us maintain some of the, um, services that were put in place with COVID funding over the last few years. And the largest one there is the learning recovery block grant, so that's about 11 million dollars for just that grant alone. And then also every time that we come to you with budget and unaudited actuals, we take a look at cash flow. And the reason this is important is if the state puts in place deferrals, which they have for 2425. So it's really good that we have strong cash reserves. This will help us to make payroll basically at those, um, large, um, if they have deferrals on the state side. Okay, so conclusions. Um, the nice thing about 2324 is we have increased our attendance rate. So we were up to 94.2, which is fantastic, so it's the first time in the last few years that we've actually been funded on current year ADA, which is wonderful. Um, local revenue in 2324, as I mentioned, was impacted by a higher interest rate, resulting in not just the greater, uh, fair market value adjustment, but also higher interest rates or, um, interest revenue that we received in 2324. And then, um, larger restricted ending fund balance, as I mentioned, that's gonna help us to maintain some of the, um, learning recovery and social emotional supports in 2425 and ongoing years. And so as Marie mentioned, right now, we're in the middle of our audit, so, um, we're hoping that there will be no adjustments, but you will hear from me again in January. I will come back and give you the audit report that will have any final adjustments to 2324. And any questions? Okay, and I will need approval on, on actuals.
I was about to ask. Like, I know it's discussion action. Like, I can't sit down until you, uh, say anything. Yes, please.
Okay, in that case, I would like to move approval of the unaudited actuals as presented.
Okay, in that case, I would like to move approval of the unaudited actuels as presented.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion by Member Lando and a second by Member Conken. Any further discussion from the board?
Yeah, I just want to make one quick comment. Well, it's really two. But looking at those charts on Slide 3 again, I'm really struck by how we were very worried about the possibility of a falloff in enrollment after COVID, and there was a lot of talk about that. And it's very nice to see that hasn't materialized. And also just how nice it is to see that ADA, you know, creeping back up again. Where there was a big worry in the COVID years that attendance patterns were going to be really disrupted, that enrollment was going to be really disrupted. It's nice to feel we're at least inching close to our, you know, traditional 95%-ish. I just want to give a big kudos to all the staff who worked very hard on retention with our students. Thank you, guys.
Agreed.
All right, well, I'm seeing no further discussion, so we can do a voice vote since last vote was unanimous. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
See you in January. Ding it!
One more, Caitlin.
Ding it. I'm just kidding.
I mean, I can leave, but.
Okay, 9.1.5 is discussion action resolution number 1659-24, GAN appropriations limit.
Okay, so every year after the passage of unaudited actuels, we are also required to pass a resolution for the pro forma calculation related to the GAN appropriations limit. This calculation is a part of the unaudited actual state report that's submitted each year, and that report was attached to this item. At this point in time, it's more of a formality, but we do need approval from the board.
No questions? Public comment? Motion?
GAN.
Just wasn't prepared. Motion?
I move Resolution Number 1659-24.
I'll second that motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? It's unanimous. It passes.
Thank you, board.
Are you going to stay? No? Okay. Thank you. Next up, we have 9.1.6. This is a discussion action item for Assembly Bill AB 2756, public disclosure documents for compensation agreement with the California Schools Employee Association, CSEA, Chapter 110.
Yes, so the next three items are all related. We will start with our California School Employees Association, Chapter 110. So Assembly Bill 2756 does require districts in a public forum to disclose any sort of financial impact related to compensation for employees of the district. So in front of you, in the attachments, Zach, if you don't mind. Yes, that one, please. This is the public disclosure that shows the dollar impact for our CSEA unit members. What we are looking to do is a 2% one-time off-the-salary schedule payment to employees. Be made during the month of October. The cost of that for our CSEA union is just over $485,000. And you saw in the presentation ahead of you, we do have very healthy reserves, and we do want to acknowledge our hardworking employees to be able to give them this one-time payment.
Do we have questions from the board at this time?
No, I'm trying to find the, the number on the resolution that we're about to pass. Madam President, do you have it available?
It's not a resolution.
It's not a resolution. It's just a.
You're approving the financial disclosure related to the compensation agreement that John will be presenting next.
Okay, thank you. I move approval of this action for California School Employees Association, Chico, Chapter 110.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the public disclosure documents for the compensation agreement with CSEA. Any further discussion from the board?
Yes, again, I just want to put out there on the record that this is a 2% off-book or off-step agreement that we negotiated with our partners in both of the unions. They understand that we are not in a position to offer a contractual advance within the, I'm sorry, it's late and I lose my words already. But we are not in a position to offer anything besides regular step advancement this, this year. But we do want to acknowledge the hard work that all of our staff does. And it's the way to do that with one-time money until hopefully we get more funding where we can build things into contract instead. So thank you for agreeing with us. Appreciate it.
Took the words from me and said it better. Yeah, just to echo that, this is a thank you to our staff. And you'll see that it's on here a couple more times. And just recognition for all the, all the hard work that everybody's been enduring for a while now. And just a thank you for being there and sticking it out and weathering some of the storms with us and looking forward to continued fiscal responsibility and fiscal health. And ideally, better state budget forecasts in the, in the future. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. Last vote was unanimous. All those in favor of approval of this item, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. And that'll hit in October, you said?
The payment will go to staff in October, yes.
Okay. 9.1.7 is a discussion action for same Assembly Bill AB 2756, which is public disclosure documents for compensation agreement with the Chico Unified Teachers Association, CUTA.
So yes, just like CSEA, we have the same agreement with CUTA for a 2% off-the-salary schedule payment. And the financial impact of that agreement is just over 1.6 million for our CUTA unit members. So looking for the board to approve the disclosure this evening.
Board questions? Public comment? Motion?
I move approv, you can take it away.
I move approval and add all the things Tom said at the last approval. And thank you to our employees. It's, it's been a rough few years with campfire and COVID and all of the things we did. But you can tell from our enrollment going up, our attendance going up, good things are happening for the students in Chico Unified. And I'm glad we're able to do this.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It also passes unanimously. And 9.1.8 is a discussion action for Assembly Bill 2756, same thing as last time. This time for Chico Unified Management Association, KUMA, and Chico Unified School District Restricted Classification Employees.
Yes, so the two prior were formal bargaining unit groups that we have with Chico Unified. This last disclosure is related to our management group and our, what we call restricted classification employees, which are on the classified side of the House, and these are primarily our school aides doing yard duty. They are not formally represented by CSEA, but we did want to acknowledge them as employees in the district and that they too would get this one-time payment. Good job. So the financial impact for these two groups is just over 358,000.
Sorry, that mosquito already got me. I was mad at it. Sorry about that, Jaclyn. I don't know why I had to be so aggressive about it, but I got it. Okay, any questions for Jaclyn? Public comment? A motion?
I move approval of the compensation agreement with the Chico Unified Management and Chico Unified School District Restricted Classification Employees.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Member Robinson and a second by Member Conken. Any further discussion?
I got a question for Jaclyn Kruger. So this is not something that could be on the consent calendar. It's just got to be in the, in the regular.
Yes, per the statute of 2756, we have to have it agendized as part of a public forum.
Yeah, all right, yeah. I guess that's good for making people aware of what's going on.
Full transparency.
You know, not being buried, you know, yeah, okay.
There's a balance between transparency and efficiency, isn't there?
Yes, there is.
In all agencies, for sure, of government. Fantastic. Any further discussion? Same, same. Thank you to this group of folks. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It is unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to human resources, 9.2, discussion action, 9.2.1, approval of variable term waiver request for a people personnel services credential for Neely Alisea Hernandez.
Thank you, Madam President. Before you is a request, a recommendation to approve a variable term waiver, essentially for a staff member, a school social worker, who does not have an intern program available to her regionally. In most cases, we, we are able to find an intern program, but in this situation, we were not able to. This, as you will read in the attached, the attached document, the, in, the employee will have a mentor assigned to her and at the end of the school year will be credentialed, very similar to an intern program. But because there isn't a social worker internship program in the region, we have to go down this path.
I'm not hearing any questions. I just wanted to open the document first.
I just want to clarify. So I guess I do have a question. This individual has an MSW, it looks like, and it's in the process of getting the PPS credential?
Correct.
Thank you.
Those are a lot of acronyms.
Yeah. So they're a master of social work already. We're employing them in a social work position, but they need to have the people personnel services credential officially to that, and they will have that by the end of the year.
Correct.
Thank you.
Works for me. If they're a social worker doing social work, that seems reasonable.
They're hard to find.
And practicing doing social work with a mentor also sounds great. Seeing no further questions, public comment? Do we have a motion?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Lando and a second by Ms. Robinson. Last vote was unanimous. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Move on. 9.2.2, discussion action for a memorandum of understanding, MOU, for one, one-time off-the-salary schedule compensation for California School Employees Association, CSEA, Chapter 110. You see how that got me caught up? Yep. Okay. It's on to you, John.
Thank you, Madam President. As you've already alluded, we are now excited about the opportunity to support all the hard work that our employees have provided, you know, over the years. And this will be the first of three recommendations for this off-the-salary schedule one-time payment of 2%. We'll start with CSEA and then work our way through the other three. I do want to commend Jaclyn and her team for basically brainstorming this concept, bringing it forward, working with union leadership, working with board members to make sure that the recognition takes place for people currently working and acknowledging that we've been through so much in the last four years, five years, that even when we have a salary formula that doesn't result in the, you know, in a raise, we can still find ways to recognize our staff. So I want to thank the team for that, and it's our recommendation that you approve the first of three.
Don't, I don't think we have any more questions.
That was well said.
And no public comment? We'll have a motion?
I move approv. I move approval of the memorandum of understanding for the one-time off-the-salary schedule compensation for California School Employees Association, Chapter 110, members.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Ms. Robinson and a second by Ms. Conken. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unanimous. 9.2.3, discussion action, and MOU for one-time off-the-salary schedule compensation for Chico Unified Teachers Association members.
Thank you, Madam President. As we've already been discussing, this is the second of three, again, with the same sentiments, just recognizing all the staff members, everything they've been, they've been through in the past few years.
Okay, same. No public comment? No questions? This time, I'm going to make the motion. I move approval of the MOU for one-time off-the-salary schedule compensation for Chico Unified Teachers Association members.
Second.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's unanimous, none opposed. All right. And 9.2.4, a discussion action item for a memorandum, MOU, for one-time off-the-salary schedule compensation for Chico Unified Management Association members and Chico Unified School District Related Classification Employees.
Thank you. And as we've been discussing, this is again just recognition. I do have two highlights on this one. The first one is to recognize Tim Karas and his leadership with KUMA. And this is his first major action as a KUMA leader, so I want to make sure, recognize him. And then secondly, and I, I don't say this facetiously, I may have been facetious with the first one, but, you know, previous boards have had the challenge of deciding to include or not include restricted employees in these decisions. And I just want to applaud the board and the team for recognizing all staff and ensuring that that takes place. We appreciate that.
Yes, I also would like to give Charlie a shout out for doing such a great job in his role with CUTA, since nobody gave shout outs in the last item.
I meant to. I looked at you when I said thank you.
True, true. Okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah, right. I'm failing at that tonight. No, Charlie has been phenomenal in his role as a CTA president and that, you've been in it for a year now? Yeah, second year, so going strong. What can I say? I brag to people outside of the district about how, how good the relationships among our, our unions and just, and unrepresented staff and the district leadership is. And I strongly appreciate everybody's work and cooperation. And it's really nice to see it play out in positive ways. We are ready for a motion.
I move memorandum of understanding, MOU, for one-time off-the-salary schedule compensation for Chico Unified Management Association members and Chico Unified School District Restricted Classification Employees.
I will second that.
All right, we have a motion by Member Tennis and a second by Member Lando. Any further discussion?
Just a quick comment, if you don't mind.
Yes.
Which is, I am thrilled to get to honor the restricted classification employees who don't always get swept up. I have to say, I brought this up before, the idea of a union of bosses weirds me out. But that said, I do want to acknowledge the incredible hard work that all of our principals, especially our staff principals, have done over the last couple of years as we've navigated all of these. all of these challenges, and they certainly deserve some recognition as well.
Thank you.
Alright. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? It's unanimous. Alright. That's fantastic. Okay, next item is under Board. 9.3.1 is informational. It's the first reading of revised, updated, new Board Policies.
Okay, we are bringing forward a whole bunch of new Board Policies for consideration. This is our first reading, and so we would like to ask the Board and the community to read these over, and if there are questions, please send those to myself or to Erica, and we'll bring those back when these come forward at the next Board Meeting for further discussion and approval. I do, however, there's something that's a little unique on this particular set of policies, something the Board doesn't typically ask to do. And that is on Board Bylaw 9220, Board of Education Elections, and this is timely, as we do have Board Elections that are coming up in November. So there are some options for the Board to consider here, and there's actually three options that you can have. You can leave the existing language as it is written. You can choose the option that is tie-decided-by-lot, or you can choose the option that is tie-decided-by-runoff-election. So I would ask that on this item, because it is different than how typically they are handled, that you give that some thought about which option that you would like to choose. It wouldn't be both. We would need to choose one or the other.
Just a quick question. When we bring this back on October 2nd, will we have this bylaw just as a separate item from the batch?
So they'll all be there, but we can pull this one out and make decisions on it, but we'll need to approve them all.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions from the Board at this time for this informational item? It's the first reading of the Board Policies, and they will come back October 2nd for approval from the Board. Alright. Seeing none, unless anybody wants to jump in. We can move to 9.3.2, which is a discussion action item for establishing leadership search Board Liaisons. That's hard to say for some reason.
Yes, it is. So as the Board and community are now aware, we are beginning the search for our next Superintendent, and that process has many steps to it. We have scheduled some community meetings. Those community meetings will be September 23rd at 6:00 PM, one here in the Miragold Elementary Library, or NPR, right where we currently are. And then there's a second one on September 25th at 6:00 PM in the Marsh Multipurpose Room. So those are two meetings to which any of our community members are invited to come and give input. They'll be discussing the qualities that they would like to see in the next Superintendent. We also have faculty and staff input meetings scheduled. They are scheduled for elementary and secondary, mainly because elementary has a different release time than does secondary, although staff members can attend either meeting. The first is on September 30th at 3:15, right here in the Miragold Multipurpose Room, and the second is October 2nd at 4:00 PM at Marsh Junior High School Multipurpose Room. Then, we are in the process right now of accepting applications for the position. There will be a paper screening process that is facilitated by Butte County Office of Education, and they're expecting to do the paper screening between October 22nd and October 25th. There will be interview panels currently tentatively scheduled for November 1st, and we're looking at two, community and staff interview panels. And then the ultimate decision will be made by the Chico Unified Board on November 6th. What we need now is for our Board to decide which portions they would like to take part in, in this process. As you know, we cannot have more than two Board Members present on any given event. So this is an opportunity for Board Members to discuss which aspect of the Superintendent's selection process they would like to participate in. I will note that at the staff and community input meetings, those are optional if there are Board Members that want to go. Again, we can't have more than two, so we should designate those if there are Board Members that want to attend. We do need Board Members to sign up, two for the paper screening, two for the first interview panel, and two for the second interview panel. So with that, I will turn that back to the Board for some discussion.
So similarly to our workshop designation for liaisons, it is just a good exercise probably for us to, I mean, we do need to decide this during open session. Right, okay. To either nominate a colleague or, you know, nominate yourself for a slot for participation so that we can kind of maybe divide out to where we're interested in being part of the process, or where we would like to see a colleague be part of the process. And I know Mr. Tennis actually started this conversation last meeting, so I thought maybe I could pitch it your way if you want to get us started again. Or open the floor for anybody, really.
What's that?
Or open the floor for anybody. No pressure.
I didn't realize there was going to be so much opportunity for Board Members to participate in this. I have got some pretty big professional obligations coming up here as Rice Harvest is rolling around. I don't want to commit to something that would be really, really difficult to get to.
I think last time you made a nomination for somebody.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't know where I would slot her, you know?
I could kind of nominate myself, I guess.
Yeah.
I have some interest.
We're gonna make this tonight? I'm gonna make the decision about where you're going.
Again, I know it looks overwhelming, but the first for the two staff input meetings and the two community input meetings, you do not have to be there. BCOE will have scribes at the tables, and they will report, record and report back all of that information. So those are optional. The intent of putting this on here was if we had four people or three people that wanted to go, that we can't do. So we really don't have to do those first ones as long as we can agree that we won't have more than two Board Members show up at one. The paper screening and interview panel one and interview panel two, we do need to have two Board Members participate in. So really, there are six opportunities and five Board Members.
I guess I'll nominate Rebecca for one of the Board Liaisons for the paper screening.
Is that something you're interested in?
I'm happy to throw somebody else on to it, you know?
It's just no, like, process, it's not like we need a second or anything, it's just-
Yep.
But I'm happy to do a double endorsement right now, you know? Although they get non-verbal cues from anyone here? Anyone here thinking they want to be a paper screener? Wink at me if you think that you do.
I do want to, I want to say something, I think, that maybe helps too, is that three of the five Board Members sitting up here will be moving on, you know, with the new Superintendent over the next two years. And so I feel strongly about this Board, you know, being part of the process and making the decision, and also would like to see Rebecca, Tom and Eileen have kind of a bigger stake in the process too. So, you know, if anybody wants to plug me in at paper screening or an interview panel, I'm open to one of them, but doesn't necessarily have to be both. So I'm kind of-
Well, I mean, you're as good a warm body as anyone else I can think of.
I agree, thank you.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna put you on my little motion too.
For?
Rebecca and Caitlin for paper screening.
Okay. I can agree with that. I'm good with that. Anybody else want to maybe speak out that they would like to do paper screening instead?
No, I'm gonna raise my hand for the interview panels. There's-
So there's four opportunities, so all Board Members but one could be on an interview panel?
The only reason I'm gonna put myself on instead of one of the other members that are staying for another, well, I'm staying for a year or two, but I've been in this district and have served under Superintendents since H. Lawson Smith. I don't think anybody else even knows who that is. But I've nine Superintendents, so I'd like to have just a little-
That sounds like somebody from another century, you know? That you were involved with.
Thank you. Yes.
The 1900s.
The 1900s.
So Kelly, if you'd plug me in on one of the interview panels.
You know, and I think that Eileen and I, we kind of like, we get along pretty well, I think, you know? And I think that we could be like a good foil for each other, you know, kind of like mashed potatoes and gravy in this interview, and so I would like to be in that if everybody's amenable to it, you know?
Sure. I'd be willing to attend one of the community input meetings, either one or two. I need to verify with my schedule, but I'd like to kind of get a feel for what the community in particular is looking for. So I would accept the nomination or the recommendation, whatever you want to call it, for paper screening. I'd also kind of like to see the process through, and I would maybe even put myself out there for another interview panel position, if possible. So, community-
We need to get Tom in here.
Yeah, if I had my druthers, I would also sit on an interview panel, and I will happily attend the secondary staff input meeting.
You two guys worked well together on the school violence draft, or what, you guys-
Yeah, we did. Drafted one of those documents. I think we'll be perfectly useful on an interview panel together.
Okay, I think you guys, as long as there's agreement with this, I show Ms. Stalby and Ms. Conken doing the paper screening, Ms. Robinson and Mr. Tennis on one of the interview panels, and Ms. Conken and Mr. Lando on the other interview panel. In addition, Mr. Lando will, plans to attend the secondary staff input meeting, and Ms. Conken plans to attend one of the community input meetings. So I would just ask if there is anybody else, it doesn't have to be tonight, but if you do decide that you want to go to the secondary staff meeting or one of the community meetings, please let me know so that if there happen to be two of you, I can make sure we get that spread out. Otherwise, I think we are good to go.
Let you know which one we attend? I mean, I should be able to know within a matter of-
That'd be great.
A week.
That'd be fabulous.
I will also probably try to attend one or more of either, I should say, like, a staff and/or a community meeting. I just have to put more thought into my workload. It's a busy time.
Yeah, just let me know so we, it doesn't look like we'll have more than two at any one meeting, but just let me know, and we'll verify that and make sure. I'm sorry, for the interview panels? I do expect those to take all day. Okay, if we can have a motion and approval for this, that would be great.
Yes, no public comment at this time? No? My motion?
Yeah.
I move the proposed slate of Board Liaison for various leadership candidate vetting activities.
Seconded.
On the vote.
We have Matt with a motion and Tom with a second. Any further discussion, Board? All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? There are none. It's unanimous. Thank you. 9.3.3 is a discussion action item. It's the approval and ratification of employment agreement with Chico Unified School District Deputy Superintendent of Business Services.
Sure, I'll take this. In Chico Unified, we're somewhat unique. Our CBO, or Chief Business Officer, has a contract directly with the Board, and tonight we're bringing forward that contract in open session for the Board to approve in public. Some of the details of this contract include the term, which is July 1, 2024, through June 30, 2027. There's a change in the title to Deputy Superintendent. There's a base salary of $197,217. It also includes a 5% longevity increase when she reaches step year five, and then after that, an annual 2% longevity increase after year five. And I'm gonna just say, we are extremely fortunate to have Ms. Jaclyn Kruger serve as our Chief Business Officer. She has the trust of those that work with her. She is extremely organized, extremely competent, and one of the most professional people I know. It's an honor to work with her, and I'm happy to present this contract to the Board for approval.
Do we have questions from the Board? No questions? Public comment? How about a motion?
I have a comment.
A comment? Do you want to wait till we have a motion?
A motion on the floor? Did you want to make the motion, Tom? You look like-
Yes, sure. I will move the Board enact the contract between the District and Jaclyn Kruger as, my gosh, I really lose my words. As we've just discussed.
I'll second that.
Please.
From the earliest moments of me being involved in this August body, you know, it's a steep learning curve showing up, you know, and you see the budget, and you've never really studied it deeply before. And you weren't in this sort of top financial job. You were like the number two, you know, but for some reason I was talking to you about, you know, you were taking me through the budget and everything like that, and you were just very respectful and meticulous, and you answered every question, and you were just really, really professional, and I thought, wow, this is a pretty sharp outfit here, if, you know, this is the number two person taking me through the budget, and you just did a really, really thorough and good job, and every presentation you've ever made is completely affirmed and, you know, established that you really have a good handle on all this stuff, which is saying something, because there's a lot of just really, really mind-boggling nuances that go into public education finance. And so you're a true professional, and, you know, I think you're a good asset to your community. So thank you for being here and so forth. Yeah.
On a similar note, we've been very fortunate to have two really great CBOs in a row, and as the Board becomes increasingly and frustratingly more entangled in politics, it is really, really important for us to be able to show to people constantly that we are being very careful and good stewards of public funds, and the work that Jaclyn does makes it very easier for us to show that we are being very careful with how every dollar and every cent is spent in pursuit of educating our students. So you make our job easier, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And I would just comment, as a community member, it might seem like these are decisions that we're just making on the fly, but this is actually something we've had the opportunity to evaluate and look at over the last couple of months, and just look at and just really study it, and as a public member, I probably wouldn't have been aware of that prior to being on Board, so I would just, I guess I'm just trying to say, I, this is something we've given a lot of thought to, and it's not something that we've just were presented to in the last week or so.
Well, so I am really happy to be able to have this discussion and bring this forward, especially the title change, and I just want to recognize that Kelly is finishing up her 18th year as a Superintendent, and, you know, will be- and, you know, will be, will be moving on. And she's been with the district for 23 years. And then, besides that, our cabinet and our district leadership has had a 100% changeover. And so we have a lot of fresh, new, you know, new in their role folks in those seats. Charlie's new as the union president in his seat. And our board is also relatively new. And so, you know, in terms of how many people are multi-term folks, and we're about to have two brand-new board members. And so, it's, it's been really eye-opening how trusted Jaclyn is and how dependable she is and has been for many, many people in this district, among all of those folks I just mentioned, and, and the community, and is very respected beyond the district boundaries. You know, I've, I have heard people say great things about Jaclyn in other districts and at conferences, and we are immensely lucky to have Jaclyn with us in Chico Unified, and we wanna keep her as long as possible. It's very important that we remember that. And so I think that it's appropriate to reclassify Jaclyn's job description as the deputy, as the clear number two, especially with a need or a desire to have that continuation of leadership, as we do go through the superintendent search and, and, and hire a new head boss after Kelly retires. And so, I'm grateful for Jaclyn's leadership and vision and responsible stewardship of not just the money aspect of things, but of all the components that make this district run really, really well. And so, I just thank you. And this is well-deserved, and if I could give you the moon, I would, and ask that you stay forever, but I'm just me, and that's all. This is all we can do for now.
Well, and that brings up another good point, if you don't mind my...
No, please, please, please.
A little tiny bit longer. We have been very lucky to have the same superintendent for 18 years. And my sincere hope is that this board and the community and BCOE do an incredible job with the search, and we find someone else who's gonna stay for a very long time. The reality is that superintendents usually stay for three years or so. Should that be the case, or if we have any other hiccups with the search, it's really important that we know exactly who's in charge on a day-to-day basis. In the past, when Kelly's been out for whatever reason, and we've had kind of a congress of the, the cabinet, right, which works on a short-term basis, but it is, as we enter the search and see what comes out the other side, it's really important that we know who has the final say on what happens, and that it's someone who is as trusted as Jaclyn is.
Aw, alright. So, hearing no further comments from the board, we do have a motion from Member Lando and a second from Member Tennis. This item is to approve an employment contract for the Deputy Superintendent Business Services from July 1, 2024 to June 30th, 2027. The compensation proposed to be awarded includes a base salary of $197,217, same percentage change in total compensation as agreed and enacted for the Chico Unified Management Association, and a 5% longevity step in 2025. Each subsequent year will allow for a 2% longevity step. Do we, oh, and with that, let's go ahead and vote. I would like to do a voice vote. I just heard my voice come back at me. That was weird. A voice vote, just, just for pomp and circumstance. And we'll start with Mr., we'll start with Mr. Tennis.
Tennis, aye.
Conken, aye.
Stalby, aye.
Lando, aye.
Robinson, aye.
It passes unanimously. Thank you, Jaclyn.
Thank you, board.
Next item is items from the floor. I have, we do have one. Okay, please. You know the rules.
I hadn't planned on saying anything, but if you've noticed, I have a special guest tonight, and so I just wanted to introduce everybody. This is my senior in high school, Lawson Cooper. I wanted to introduce him because he is actually interested in obtaining his civil, civics certificate. And I don't know how many people are aware of, of what that is. So, anyways, he's been helping me out a lot. He's here tonight to learn more. Sorry if we were whispering kind of a lot, but he had a lot of questions. And I thought tonight might be a little boring for him, but he had a ton of questions, so I was super excited about that. So I just wanted to let everybody know that this is a wonderful program. I'm super excited about it, and so is he. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry you had to witness me smash a mosquito. How embarrassing.
And if you do have any questions, please feel free to reach out to any of us.
Alright. Board member request to agendize items. At this time, no board member requests have come through. And just a reminder that those do need to get submitted by the end of the day on Tuesdays, the week that agendas are published. So if we want to get things on the agenda to, go ahead and do that, I'm not gonna math it in my head right now what the date is for next. It's really next Tuesday, yes, if you want it on the October 2nd meeting. And with that, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So...
That was a literal tie.
We try our best.
We'll be back.